Go. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Troutdale Planning Commission for Wednesday, September 28, 2022. If we could have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Whitton. He's not online, so. Commissioner Wadilla.
Here.
Commissioner Lemmy.
Here.
Commissioner Prickett.
Here.
Commissioner Wilcox.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
And Chair Stephenson.
Here. Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask everyone to stand for the pleasure of the minutes, and Commissioner Allen will be leading us to see.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it has one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any agenda updates?
No, no. Not at this.
Can I propose one? Slipping four A and B.
Yeah.
Would that be okay?
Yeah.
Everyone okay with that? Okay. Will it be first, and then will it be both type fours? All right. With that, this one is, the next item is continuing, or I should say. Yeah, I'm going to do public comment, and we'll get into that first one. Okay, is there anyone wishing to speak to the Planning Commission this evening on a non-agenda item? Come forward, please, sir.
Good night. My name is Saul Pompeo, and I comes by the owner of Restaurante Pompeo Downtown Troutdale, and I come in to for to share with you guys my vision of something. I don't know, it's in the agenda. I do not have time to read the agenda. What I need to come back to my restaurant in the next 10 minutes, and I ask you if I can comment about the system, the the city of Troutdale's transportation system plan. Can I make a comment about this plan?
On the transportation plan? Actually, we're not doing the transportation plan this evening.
Okay, perfect.
I'm sorry.
So I really glad to comment about this because it's in the.
You just have a comment you want to make?
Yes.
Okay, in general, yeah, that's fine.
Yes, I start to read this plan, and the first thing I read, and I share with my customers, this plan that I adjust to downtown to Portland system transportation plan. And everybody here, and many people complain about is how Portland transportation plan. And again, in this plan, they try to push the people to doesn't use the cars. I was to show, share with you guys, even they wants to, this paper and compare it in the plan, is pushing the people for doesn't use their cars. My comment in this point is the only way the people don't use their car is if you elevate the density of the populations is not create problems for the parking. In this plan, I don't see how they address the more population and more parking if you wants to grow the business. I want to you guys read very slowly this plan and figure out if it's the plan the citizens of Troutdale wants to approve. In my opinion, this is not the plan the vision of the citizens, reflect the vision of the citizens. We have almost two years downtown commission, and everybody agree to increase the business on downtown Troutdale. Business means customers, customers means cars. Please read very slowly before do suggestion to the city council approve or not approve this plan. I just start to share this plan to my customers, and they start to read, and the first thing when they say they wants to match like Portland transportation plans, go to Portland if you like what is Portland right now. That is my only comment. You guys have a high responsibility of this plan because it's a plan for 20 years. Like last, like yesterday, because in the previous plan, they approved more bicycle, they almost and start install more rack bicycles and block the parking. We input, and they say, no, we go to wait. That means it's very, even they say it's not important approve the plan later, we figure out the plan put the guidelines in the long term. Read slowly, figure out if it's the plan really we need. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Planning Commission this evening on a non-agenda item? Anyone on Zoom wishing to speak this evening? Not seeing any. All right, with that, we will move on, and the next item is continued business, the home forward application, and it's finding a fact. And so what we are doing is we are proving the finding of fact for case file LU 00132022 home forward. And I think everyone got a copy of that, correct?
Updated one.
Yes. Okay. And you guys want to go through it, or do you want us to?
If you'd like to go through it, if there's any changes, I have it, I'm tracking it on the screen there.
Okay. Was one with the date. You guys did.
Commissioner Lemmy, where was, which page was that? This, the finding just on page? The second, second page?
Two, in the, under findings of fact, number two. No, number one.
Yeah, it's the September 20th date.
Should be the 14th.
Right.
Oh, yes.
You just want to roll through that. You're sharing, right?
Yeah, I, yeah, I forgot to print out the, the findings because we received them after the packets were delivered, so I only sent up electronic copies of them. I apologize.
And so let's just go through them slowly since everyone does have a copy of them, okay? Any questions thus far? Okay, so go ahead and roll ahead.
So is that not a special meeting on the 14th?
That would be a regular scheduled meeting.
Okay.
Two and four.
Yeah, okay. This is the second page still. The very first finding, the parking variance.
And this was all what we discussed. Go ahead.
Chair Stephenson.
Oh, Commissioner Wilcox.
I noticed that under the park, parking variance, there were a couple of errors. They were listing the code required number has 219, and it should have been 188. That appears in a couple of locations that I, I saw on page two and on page four.
That would be 180. Okay. Go ahead, Alex. I didn't see it. I guess we don't need the variance density in the funding.
No, I think that's fine.
Three, seven now. Any questions on the findings? So a yes, but vote will be for denial of the application site design review. I'm actually going to take these in two steps.
I wanted to the variance first. Yeah, it would be three, I mean, we previously have voted to approve the lot line adjustment, so we're okay with leaving that. But and then just vote twice, once for the variance and once for the site development review.
Okay. And then you don't need a separate one for the F. Okay. All right, so if there's nothing else, entertain a motion for that would be for the application and for the variance.
For the application.
No, for the variances. Right? Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I moved that we approve variance as written by staff on case file number 0013-2022.
How about if we could approve the decision as written?
Our decisions, right?
Okay.
Okay. Obviously. I moved that we approve the decisions made on the variance for case file 0013-2022.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to accept the findings for case file LU 00132022 home forward, and this is for the variance criteria, and any discussion on the motion or any questions for legal? Seeing none? All right.
Commissioner Wadilla?
Yes.
Commissioner Lemmy?
Yes.
Commissioner Prickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
And Chair Stephenson.
Yes. Okay, that one passes, and now we are going to move into site design review.
Same thing.
Yeah.
Sorry. Mr. Chair, I moved that we accept the findings for the site development review for value dasher 0013 dash 2022 home forward.
A second on that.
I'll second that.
Okay. Commissioner Prickett, second by Commissioner Wadilla, to accept the findings as written for site design review for case file LU 00132022. Any discussion on the motion? None. Okay, fire.
Commissioner Wadilla?
Yes.
Commissioner Lemmy?
Yes.
Commissioner Prickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Or Allen?
Yes.
And Chair Stephenson.
Yes. Okay, now we pass this. Okay, and the lot line was already approved, so we don't need one for the full application, right?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. All right, thank you. Okay. Just move it right along into the next one. All right, the matter for us this evening is case file LU 00202022 Southwest Second Street vacation. And before we have a public hearing on this item, I'd like to explain a little bit about the planning commission, the procedure following for tonight's public hearing. The planning commission is appointed seven member volunteer body of Troutdale citizens. Members of the planning commissioner Troutdale residents who've been appointed by the city council. They serve four-year terms. They are strictly volunteers and receive no pay for their services. Planning commission serves as a citizen committee for the review of land use application and various land use related matters within the city. Items which the planning commission consider include uses of land, subdivisions, major variances, land use policy plans, and development regulations. For some land use applications, planning commission makes a final decision. For other applications, they're simply making a recommendation to the city council who renders the final decision. Now, tonight's application, we will be making a recommendation on the vacation to the city council who will be tendering the final decision. Procedures for quasi-budicial land use hearings are held in accordance with Oregon law and procedures contained in the Troutdale Development Code. The hearing proceeds as follows. City staff presents their report, which includes applicable criteria and standards for the matter under consideration land use application. All testimony and evidence should be directed towards these criteria. If you believe that other criteria in the comprehensive plan, development code, or other city land use regulations apply, you must identify these criteria and explain why they apply to the decision. The planning commission is a public testimony relating to the application. The applicant is allowed to speak first, followed by proponents, then by opponents, and then by any parties neutral to the application. An opportunity will be provided to anyone testifying to clarify any issues raised. All issues raised by a participant during the public hearing must be sufficiently clear and specific to allow the planning commission and other parties an opportunity to respond to those issues. Failure to raise an issue during this public hearing may invalidate a future appeal based on that issue. Prior to closing the public hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The planning commission must grant the request either by continuing the public hearing to a future date or by leaving the record open for at least seven days to admit only that specific additional written evidence or testimony. If the record is left open for the additional written evidence or testimony, any participant may file a written request for an opportunity to respond to new evidence submitted during the period the record was left open. If such a request is filed, the planning commission shall reopen the record to allow any person to raise new issues which relate to the new evidence, testimony, or criteria for decision making. And as a final note, just to remind everybody, public hearings are recorded, therefore, if you come up, we speak into the microphone, state your name and address for the record. And at this time, I'd like to normally ask if there's any ex parte contact or bias conflict of interest, but would be in a type four application, that's not necessary at this time. So we will go ahead and we will open the public hearing for case file LU 00202022 Second Street vacation.
Hey, good evening, commissioners and members of the public. The item before you is a vacation to Southwest Second Street. Next slide just shows the, the red area is the proposed right of way to be vacated. It's located at the intersection of Southwest Second Street and Kendall Court, and where it turns into Southwest Kendall Ave. That right of way is 60 feet wide currently, and they are proposing to vacate the southern 30 feet of that. It's currently an unimproved right of way and has never been developed to city standards, and it is currently owned and maintained by the city of Troutdale. This picture just shows in greater detail the area that the applicant is proposing to have vacated. It's approx, it's just over 4,000 square feet, about 30 feet in width, and it will end at the current location of where Kendall Court is. The current land will be then, if approved, it will transfer ownership back to the owner of the adjacent lots, which is Multnomah County. And the picture to the right just shows how it currently looks. The road has never been maintained, and there are no plans to have that right of way extend any further, and there's no connection to Southwest 257th either. So what is being requested is a vacation of Southwest Second Street, just west of the intersection with Southwest Kendall. The vacation is only for that southern 30 feet of right of way, and will be given back to the adjacent property owner to the south. The northern 30 feet of right of way will remain as is, but will not be open for vehicular traffic. There have been studies done for a potential bike slash pedestrian bridge crossing to use that portion of the right of way to begin its ramp up over 257th. What is not being requested is any development of the Second Street Bridge with this application. This clearly, this is just removing right of way to get back to the adjacent property owners. What also is not being requested with this is any development within this right of way. Any development that will be, that is proposed here in a vacated portion will follow the appropriate application procedure when it, and if it ever comes in. These are just the applicable criteria points that were used to evaluate this application. And the review procedure, it falls under a type four, which is a public hearing with a and followed by city council. That is the standard for all type four applications, including right of way vacations. The city of Toronto Public Works did provide comments on this, and they suggested that approval can be issued with the conditions of approval being met for this item. There are two decision criterias for a vacation. A, the proposal does not cause a conflict with the comprehensive land use plan. Looking through the various land use plans and the different standards within that, the street vacation meets that expectation of citizen involvement because that process is dictated by state regulations regarding public notice, and a public hearing is required. I believe for the applicant, 100% of the adjacent properties signed off on the vacation, and 73% of the affected property owners signed off on the vacation, which I believe exceeds the two-thirds requirement. The vacation will not conflict with the recreational needs identified in the policies of the comprehensive plan, and the pedestrian bicycle connectivity potentially, if ever built, could increase recreational opportunities and further increase connectivity to sites west of 257th. The proposed vacation will not conflict with the goals of increasing energy efficiency in buildings, transportation, or location of facility or services. Since the right of way is not intended to access Southwest 257th Drive, the only alternative design would be a cul-de-sac built to city standards, which would use a significant amount of developable land only to serve one property and would remove the ability for a proposed bridge to be developed in the future. As such, this criterion is met. Second criteria is the public interest will not be prejudiced by the vacation. Connectivity cannot be increased due to topographic constraints and limitations on new access points to Southwest 257th. The city of Toronto's Public Works Department has indicated that there are no, there were no plans to make that connection ever happen. 257th is a county-owned right of way, and they've indicated that that connection would never. Two fifty seventh is a county owned right of way, and they've indicated that that connection would never be possible due to the topography of the site as well as the proximity to the intersection with the Columbia Highway. The vacation of the indicated portion will also return land to adjacent properties to allow for a greater flexibility in design to accommodate for setbacks and building orientations. And as such, this criterion is met. Staff recommends, the planning commission recommend approval to the city council. And I believe that is all for my presentation.
Okay, questions for staff? Commissioner Allen, please.
So, this is an interesting one. So I can concur that the, that we did ask for a road for emergency vehicles to be built through the two fifty seventh to allow quicker input and access in case of emergency, and it was denied. So my question is, if we do build a bridge in the future, which I'm not against, I just think there are more immediate needs at this time. Wouldn't we need that accessway in order to get to the bridge? Now, Multnomah County says they would do that. But we don't really know what the future is going to bring. So I guess this is the question that I had was, if the property ends up getting sold to another person and no accessway to a bridge is actually developed by Multnomah County, then that possibility is gone. Is there, is there any concerns on that? So we don't know who's going to buy the property in the future, you know. Multnomah County today, somebody else tomorrow, who knows in the future. And it's not the first time that we've had ideas and proposals change on us without our consent or knowledge. So I'm just wondering if it's a wise thing to do.
You kind of hold that thought for a little later in the program.
Well, in case we need input from our attorney.
Well, he's not going anywhere. He's on the clock.
All right.
He's. But any direct questions for staff? Commissioner Wilcox?
No, nothing, thank you.
Okay, with that. We'll go ahead and invite the applicant to come forward.
Good evening. I'm back. Thank you for having us again, commissioners. I'm Alonda Sol. I work for Home Forward. Do you want my home address?
Your business address?
My business address, one thirty-five Southwest Ash Street, Portland, Oregon. Can't remember the zip code anymore because I've been hybrid for so long. Thank you for having us this evening. I just have a few comments that are somewhat consistent with staff comments. On behalf of Multnomah County, Home Forward is requesting your recommendation to city council to vacate the southern half of Southwest Second Street, west of Southwest Kendall Court. The area to be vacated is approximately a hundred and thirty-nine feet by thirty feet wide. As staff have outlined, and as we submitted, we received approval for the vacation from a hundred percent of the adjacent neighbors and seventy-three percent of the affected neighbors, meeting the state requirements for a street vacation. This right of way is an unimproved dead end street. If improved, our understanding is it would be required to be a cul-de-sac, which would only serve the county property and the property on the north side of Southwest Second Street. The county transportation engineer has jurisdiction over Southwest two hundred and fifty seventh drive, as you all know, and has repeatedly indicated that a through connection of Southeast Second Street is not practical due to safety and operational concerns. All adjacent properties have access to other public roads. The county property retains frontage on Southwest Kendall Court, Southwest Fourth Street, and the remaining north half of Southwest Second Street. While Home Forward remains committed to building affordable housing at the site, this proposal to vacate half of a dead end street is independent of any specific proposal and benefits any future development scenarios as well. Once vacated, the right of way that reverts to the adjacent property provides more flexibility in the development of new buildings and the ability to provide open space and parking for the property. The chief engineer has determined that there is no need for the southern half of this dead end street. Sorry, I just lost my spot. And that operations and maintenance by the public of a street that would function as a driveway for a single lot is not appropriate. The remaining north half of Southwest Second Street can accommodate a pedestrian bicycle path that with additional dedication can be connected to Southwest two hundred and fifty seventh. The approval of this vacation does not commit or prejudice future decisions about a pedestrian bridge over Southwest two hundred and fifty seventh. It provides for the possibility of a sidewalk connection between Southwest Kendall and the sidewalk on two hundred and fifty seventh or go over the bridge. As you know, planning and public work staff have recommended approval of this request. And that's all I have for you this evening. And I'll just stay here.
Any questions? Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone wishing to speak as a proponent? See. Anyone on Zoom wishing to speak as a proponent to the application? Anyone wishing to speak as an opponent to the application? Anyone online wishing to speak as a pro? Any neutral parties? Any neutral parties online wishing to speak? No, okay.
I'm moving close to public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor? Signify.
Aye.
Any post? Okay. All right. So. I have a question for Mr. Lopez. You mentioned that if the right of way in this not vacated, the bridge could not be built. I understand that, right?
No, the, the bridge still could technically be built if the street was not vacated. The northern thirty half that is remaining as is will be the landing or where the bridge will rise up if, if built as proposed.
So it can be done either.
Correct.
Okay, so. I want to just take a little bit of a, a different look, but a different look at this. When I was looking at this, and then I looked at the property to the north, which is known as. Is that the overlook track?
I'm not sure of the, the technical name right now.
And the reason I bring that up is. I guess it is. It's the overlook track. And or part of the overlook track, I should say. But that is a property that was looked at as an opportunity site. And looked at as community service, high density residential or mixed use. And the only reason I'm going there is I, I was at the council meeting last night, and I was reminded that planning staff is looking like twenty, thirty years into the future. And so I was trying to do that myself a little bit. I got to thinking, okay, with the highway being a limited access road, that curb cut for Plaid Pantry would probably not remain if there was redevelopment. I'm just spitballing here. And so your best option would be to load that lot from the rear, right? Because you can't load it from two fifty seven, can't really load it from, from Kendall. So you try to do it from the second. And if we didn't have the right of way, it wouldn't be built to city standards, so it would be really hard to do that.
Very.
The, the, if the city were to build it to city standards, it would have to end in a cul-de-sac, and that would have to remain within that extension. I don't believe that it goes west enough to provide, you would have to cut through the northern port part of their lot in order to get access to Plaid Pantry from the rear. So I think you would have to get approval from that lot to extend the right of way to accommodate for that. If that needed, if that makes sense, I could.
Right, I'm just saying you don't have any way to get to those lots, right? If there was no access on the highway.
If, if they decided to redevelop and remove their curb access, I assume so, but I don't, I don't see a property owner doing something like that without ensuring they have access from a different site.
Right.
So this doesn't connect to Plaid Pantry, doesn't it?
No.
All right.
No, but it connects to the lot.
It connects to there.
It doesn't, it's not adjacent to their property.
No, it connects a lot adjacent to it.
Correct, yes.
So it would be, basically, it connects to the. And breakfast. But not Plaid Pantry. Right, right.
There's a house on that property now that, south of the Plaid Pantry. I said there's a house on that property now that's.
Right.
Yeah.
There's a house there, and I just know there's been a couple attempts at loading redevelopment proposals for that, that lot.
Yeah, because I see where you're going with that, because Plaid Pantry is around the corner, and like people are trying to pull it in out of that parking.
It gets a little interesting.
Yeah, very.
Especially when they're making the left turn onto the highway. And somebody's turning in front of them. Any other thing, of course, I get concerned with is, you know, you got that six o'clock at night or five o'clock or whatever, you got the Coca-Cola truck out there in the middle of the street. And it just doesn't, I don't know, just doesn't.
It just doesn't seem.
I just wonder if there's a different way or a better way. Obviously, it would be some that getting redevelopment, but in the town center plan, we kind of call for that as something we would look at supporting redevelopment for, so. I guess my wonder would be, are we kind of going against our town center plan by vacating right of way?
Chair. You know, I was just going to ask you to consider creating actually more flexibility for your town center plan by vacating this street that's not being currently used and can connect to from two fifty seven. You're creating greater opportunity for a larger site for someone to think creatively about what can happen or not happen in the future. They'll figure out the access on their own depending upon how dialed in that larger vision is. You know what I mean? Like that larger vision, if we, if we collectively get it right, there's going to be enough there, there for them to figure out how to get access to the site. So I think you're actually creating a little flexibility.
But we've been down that road before, where we've vacated a piece of property, and we, we, it's come to bite us again. Vacating city property is not an easy decision to make because once we do it, it's final, so. And we have to look, like I said, we can't look short too long.
But I see, I see what you're saying.
I see what you're saying, yes. I agree.
But seems to me that we have plenty of access to this property off of Kendall. Do we know?
Not really, or it's houses over there. There's another business there.
Not as Kendall is now. Because you have parking on both sides.
Yeah, there's not, okay, this belongs to Home Forward. Just clear down to here.
Right.
So there's no way to come here to reach Plaid Pantry property because they own this.
Right, so I mean, looking at it, yeah, you have fifty feet, which is Kendall. Right? And you have parking on those sides, and you have sidewalks on one side, not on the other. And so theoretically, if that got improved, that might shrink down to below fifty feet? Would not?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
And just having trouble visualizing what, what you're going to be able to access from this piece.
You said it would be, if you did it that way, I just, it would be easier to get larger vehicles to the back of that lot. That's the only thing I would, I would say that would really do for you. Because you'd have a street there.
Right. But Plaid Pantry, clear up.
Right. But I'm saying if you redeveloped the lot, you.
Probably this one.
Yeah. Because you wouldn't have anybody taking access, I wouldn't think, off of the highway at that point. It'd be hard to do. It's a thought. There's not the trend, three for. Commissioner Allen, go ahead.
So I believe I understand what you're saying. If the right of way was there, then there's a possibility having a route through the better practice to Plaid Pantry in the future.
Right.
If they, if they purchase that property.
Or, yeah, and even I looked at, like, just having access to that lot in general would be better from up there than I think it would be off, trying to take it off of the highway. Kendall doesn't work. At all, we know that.
If you're looking to the future, what kind of business would you see fitting in there?
Me?
Does anybody?
Don't ask me like this, it's me. I would anticipate, like, on that corner, probably something that is either commercial or mixed use. You agree to it?
Just want to make sure, again, I'm getting up to speed on all this stuff, so I apologize, but I don't know it that well. When you say corner, you mean corner.
This area here, yeah.
Corner Main Street and two fifty seven, where the Plaid Pantry is, what I would imagine to be, yeah, I'd imagine it being mixed use. I don't think you're going to be able to access that site via.
Mixed use, I don't think you're going to be able to access that site via. Via two fifty seven, I think that's already been proven.
Right.
By the conversation that Alex has led. I'm still, Alex, can you just point to, point on screen to what are the boundaries of the? Of the site? The driveway almost bifurcates the existing site, is that true? It sits in the middle of it.
Correct, yes, it's this, um.
This is the alternative cursor.
Yes.
The property line.
This is the, the property line here. So the, this is the current existing right of way terminates here, and this is the county's property, Plaid Pantry is these. Two lots just to the north here.
Yeah. I mean, I guess I understand what you guys are saying, but it doesn't seem totally germane to the criteria. To be honest with you. It seems like it's. To. Councilman's point, I don't quite understand why folks need to access the site in the future, there wouldn't be other opportunities to do it. Yeah, I still think you're creating opportunities. For something. I don't know, I think you're right, I think there probably is a mixed use project, and I think it's probably, frankly, I think it's probably less. Car oriented despite what folks might think, because it's on the corner, it's going to be, I think this whole area is going to become more walking oriented, but. That's my personal thoughts. So. Make this, I think the street. Is otherwise darily called. Word, but a piece of property that's not easily developable by anybody.
Which is?
Through the vacation piece, on this, yeah, the vacation piece, it's not really serving anybody. Regardless of who that anybody is.
Right. Or at least not the way anything's. Is today.
That's right.
Yeah. Michelle?
Well, we've all seen things through the years. Properties developed and redeveloped, redeveloped. Uh, who owns that property, just to the north of it? Is that the bed and breakfast?
It is.
Oh, if I were developing it, I would buy it for him and buy the bed and breakfast property. And try to get something with it.
How much pushback are we going to get from the historical society and the historic landmarks?
We don't get any.
Okay. On that house getting pushed or hold up.
We aren't doing anything.
Right. But whoever decides to develop it. Is going to have a fight.
I think, well, I think it's an historic site, that it's got some fundamental issues to it. As a foundation. So those that should probably have to be addressed, no matter who went in there. I just know there's been people looking at that. So I think one of those may have more of an opportunity, maybe some.
Chair Stephenson?
Yes, Commissioner Wilcox.
Uh, what I'm hearing is, it sounds like, uh. Chair Stephenson is envisioning. What if that entire? Corner were cleared? So the Plaid Pantry, the Bed and Breakfast, the Yale Pub. Were essentially demolished, moved from the land. And you're wanting to retain. Access from South, or Second Street is my. My kind of close to what you're. Having in mind.
Yeah.
Okay. That's kind of what I thought, just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, I, I just don't see access coming off of the highway or off of two fifty seven, and I'm just trying to think of what would be the best way to. Service those properties. Especially if they're commercial.
Well, that's where one goes through a development application and comes through with a new set of ideas, which is not just about the building and design, about. The access or street or driveway. The truth of the matter is, we don't know.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's, so we're kind of. It's tough, right? Because we want to think forward, and, you know, I'm the new guy in the blocks, and. Trying to be sensitive to what some of the past things that you all have gone through that you're kind of worried about. Concerned about vacations that might have gone. Maybe not to the best benefit of the, uh. You, the city, I don't have that history.
There is a list.
There's a list. So.
Any other questions, Commissioner Wilcox?
Thank you.
So. Two things would have to happen for us to approve that the proposal does not cause a conflict with the comprehensive landers plan. The other one is the public interest monkey. Prejudiced by the vacation. I think both of us can be like it. Okay. Say everything you want to do. Or you want to hear the title of the question?
So if the Second Street Bridge goes in.
Mm-hmm.
The thirty feet to the north. Has to be used for that, right? It can't be.
I would guess. I haven't seen that design.
Use it for access to the property. So are we tying our hands in a bridge?
Are we? No, because we still have the property. If we didn't do it. Right?
Because the morning was not much more.
Yeah.
When the birds were pretty minimal.
Yes, sir.
Your chair, I'm sorry. It seems like if the, we don't know what's going to happen, if the bridge goes in, we're going to want the access, the bridge doesn't go in. We're going to want the access. Um, I think the real difference here is if the bridge goes in, maybe we don't need the access as well. That seems to be the only, only difference.
So you're a proponent of keeping right of way, is that true?
Or it's in the lead, right?
All right, anything else? Do you have anything, Dan?
I can see the advantage of vacating and keeping the, the north out.
Keeping the north out for an access.
For access.
Yeah, it wouldn't be built to street standards.
But, right.
That'd be a decent thing else.
I can see doing that.
All right.
We're not obligated to providing. For development.
Obligated to vacate the right of way?
Right.
No.
Yeah.
You're not obligated to. It's a request.
I mean, if somebody wants to buy Plaid Pantry and the bed and breakfast, we're not obligated to provide them. A back, you know, the use of this.
We're not obligated to, correct?
I don't think you're.
Yeah, we're not obligated to.
If you're obligated to.
But it's pretty hard to have somebody develop something that don't have access.
I might try.
Yeah, please.
If, if Plaid Pantry were to redevelop, it would, it would just be that property, and if we were to condition that approval. We, we wouldn't be able to, they don't have frontage on that Second Street right of way, so we wouldn't be able to condition them to connect through somebody else's property.
No, you couldn't.
No, we, we understand that.
You couldn't. Right.
Right, okay.
You're saying that if somebody takes the Plaid Pantry and the bed and breakfast.
I'm, I'm trying to say, what if it developed in a way that we haven't seen? Okay. That's all, considering this is an opportunity site. And when I look at that, and then I look at, you know, community service use, high density residential, and mixed use are the three. Recommended choices. That's like. Has refilled. That's all. I think there's a couple of calling a question for goal six and goal seven. At the TSP.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
Please explain that. Okay, no, no, I'm not, I'm not very good at the goals to you, but just explain to me how, how it works against the TSP.
Okay, so.
Can't connect to, can't connect to two fifty seven anyway, so it's not a connectivity issue. At least it's not a particular connectivity issue in terms of pedestrian. Bicycle connectivity. I'm almost a little uncomfortable talking about something that we don't know, it's, it's. The timing of how this all works together, I think we can all agree is pretty interesting.
Yeah, for sure.
Right, for sure, just, and so, you know, but we. Don't know if Home Forward has a project or not. We don't know if the Second Street. Bridge is going. To happen or not. What we do know is. Applicants in, whoever he or she or they might be. Is looking at a piece of property that hasn't up to this point totally served the city. And looking to create more development, this to my eyes, to create more development potential on that particular site. To me, that's why one goes through, one of the good reasons why one goes through a street vacation. So.
Yeah, and so all, all I'm thinking is, I'm just looking at it from the town center perspective and saying, okay, this is an opportunity site, so. Knowing that there's an opportunity site there, what, what can we do to best? Help that site.
Right.
And so then I look at it in the vacation. Uh, for me, it's kind of like, I don't know how that. Would help that site. It would help this site from a standpoint that they would get. Additional land. This one, but would it help? Would it help the other properties that could be affected by this?
Um, potentially, yeah, we don't know, right?
Right.
No, but.
Oh, sorry.
Um, if you remember from the transportation system plan, there are action plans and master plans, and there is a motor vehicle plan. In our motor vehicle plan, there's local connectivity, and there are planned extensions. And we don't have this listed as a roadway. To construct on there, and I think that you could make a strong case if it were on there, that it conflicts with the transportation system plan, but absent of wanting. I think it could be a difficult case to make, that it conflicts with the transportation system.
Because it's not listed as a road?
Well, and again, the new guy in town. What, you know. Turning radiuses, distance between intersections, things like that, upward, a bit of topography changes are probably some of the reasons why it's not connected.
Okay. Or just have another player there.
That would, that shouldn't be a TSP issue, TSP issues should be looking at the other things about what. Makes sense in terms of connectivity, if someone is going to look to develop it or not develop it.
Yeah, so if I looked at goal seven, like policy, right, supports innovative street design that balances multiple transportation objectives. Ensuring that roadway facilities are safe and attractive to pedestrian bicycle transporters and motor vehicles. I'm just wondering if we're. We're forcing more onto the main street. I gave her the right of way. That's all. I think just limit your possibilities to access a lot and for approach the bridge. You know, if the bridge went in. Be right next to that, correct, Alex?
Yes.
Yeah.
If, if I may, there's always an opportunity, say, if those, several of those lots, including the, you know, the Chardelle and the Plaid Pantry, and the, the pub on the corner. Say they were to be raised and some type of development were to occur in that site, technically, an applicant could also provide. Additional right of way space within north of that bridge site. Uh, so there's always an opportunity to create additional right of way if they wanted to do some type of access off of there, so I don't think you would be completely removing that. Option, since there's just the house on site. So if there were to be development that would come in, I think with no structures there, I think it would be. You'd have a, a better way to design something with accommodating for access to it off of Kendall.
Mission period.
We're going to be asking, let's say, a future applicant asks about a certain amount of right of ways. You know, access is wrong property.
From a different, uh.
Different point.
Street, correct, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Michelle?
So I think one thing that's going through my mind is the historic Plumber River Highway. Um, certain times of day that gets rather backed up. And that's one of the, one of the reasons. why we wanted to, the, the street through is so emergency vehicles could get out and get to the call. Time is, time is life, basically. But should a bridge go in there, you need to access the bridge. Should the property to the north get developed? Yeah, you might want that. I want that access. We don't, I guess we just don't know what's going to happen.
Right.
And there's no guarantees on any of this stuff. Property owners do what property owners do.
I remember it came off.
Okay. Right for this. My thoughts.
So I'm thinking, Rich, you really still don't have access to the bridge because you have to go through their property.
But they're rebuilding the bridge, right?
No, county would.
The county wouldn't.
The county would, but we would.
They're, they're not, and they're not going to give up 60 feet of right of way through their property to get to the bridge. If you need a vehicle.
Oh, you wouldn't, you wouldn't necessarily need a vehicle to bridge at least. Just.
Well, you've got 30 feet.
But this would be 30 feet before it hits your property where there's the landing, right, then.
Right, it has to go over.
Yeah. It's still right in front of it, yeah.
And there's always a concern about the obligation of the city. They'll be forced to fund for that bridge too.
For all of them.
Right, that's, yeah, not our thing tonight, though.
Yeah, it's a good point.
All right. Mr. Trump, did you have any comments?
And I'm sorry, there, I was making a few notes. Let me just see if the, um, the, the vacation does preclude vehicular access at any kind of a, a, a street width that's required by city standards. But I'm also wondering about what happens if the pedestrian and bicycle, bicycle traffic really does become a major kind of transportation in the area. It may be that, that we want a wide, two-way vehicular pedestrian or separate pedestrians from bicycles because they may not get, be safe when people get going fast on bikes. I, I don't know, I'm just thinking through some of the, the conclusions to what some people are talking about. So, um, you know, the it does, you know, it, yeah. More, more than that, I'm not sure that, that I, I've heard a lot of conversation and I think I've heard all of the things I was thinking about, but, but I can't always hear everything that would, because people aren't always by the microphone. So it's a little hard to, to pick up some of the details.
I just want to make sure I understood you correctly. You're, you're raising a concern that seems to sort of lend itself to the width of the infrastructure based upon bike and whether I heard you correctly, that you wanted to make, you were raising a question about bike and pet separation for a safety issue, which was leading to greater width.
It was a question, it was a, it was merely a reflection of thought that, that I had.
I would say there's no precedent for that. We don't have that type of width in our most urban areas, let alone a bridge going over 257 or a population of 20,000.
Right. But I've, I've been, I have been in cities where it's pretty dangerous to walk among the bicycles because they will knock you down if you're not, if you're not really observant. And there's a lot of them, a lot of European cities.
The Brooklyn Bridge, you gotta be careful what you're doing on the Brooklyn Bridge, but I think this is a bit of a different animal.
So, yeah, I, that was, I was just going through some notes that I made while, while I was listening to the discussion. And that was just something that came to my mind. The rest of this on the legal, um, uh, you know, the the city council is, is looking for funding for this bridge, bike pedestrian bridge, and, um, I don't know what they might need to get there. Yeah, I guess, I guess I don't have a lot to say, Chair Staffenson, right at the moment, but, but I heard several comments about goal six and goal seven in the TSP. And, and those were along the lines of the things that, that I had been thinking about. So I'm not going to reiterate it.
Okay. Right. If there's no special, I'd be looking for a motion.
This is just a recommendation, right?
Yes.
I think that, go to public hearing first.
We are, yeah, we are.
Okay. This is recognition. Anything? Answer, Fred.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Prig.
I'm do not recommend the vacation. So let's turn second screen.
All right, you're recommending denial of the application, the vacation of Southwest Second Street. All right. Anyone second that motion? No one second that? I'll start. All right. So we have a motion in the second for ca- case file. Y'all, you. So, L U zero zero two zero two zero two two. And this is the half-street vacation, the right of way at Second Street. And this would be due to corporate's land use plan. A and B. Not being satisfied. Discussion on the motion. Okay.
Commissioner White Della?
No.
Commissioner Lee Me?
No.
Commissioner Prickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Okay, so, hey, let me rephrase. The yes would be for deny.
A yes would be for denial.
Okay. Yes is for denial, no is for, no is for vacation. Do we need to call that in?
I'll change my vote to yes.
Sorry. Just start over.
I'll recall. Commissioner White Della?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee Me? Commissioner Prickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox? Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
And Chair Staffenson?
Yes. Times.
And there are four yeses and two noes.
Okay. Fails, okay, thank you. Your recommendations to council. All right, can I take a quick break before we go into the next one?
Okay.
Okay. We'll take a break and repeat the meeting. File seven. One, two. And this is amend the trout development code for light industrial zone. Ms. Johnston.
Thank you, planning commission. I'll be presenting tonight and sharing the staff report and the recommendation for proposed text amendment. This is for case file seventy five twenty one, and it concerns an amendment to the industrials of the district. The chapter of the trout deal development code. Well, there are two primary requests served by this application. The city is the applicant in this case, and the first request is initiated by the city. We are proposing to reorganize the industrial zoning chapter to include a use table, a dimensional standards table, and a few other general organizational tasks. This is a general code update and follows up a few code updates worked on earlier this year to revise the residential zoning chapter and revise the commercial zoning chapter. And we've also received a request from Pacific Northwest Properties. And they are the owner and manager of several properties in the light industrial zone, the I eighty four corporate center. And you can see our zoning map there on the right. If I can indicate this. I'll just try this guy. So they have properties right here in this vicinity here of the light industrial area. More specifically, they would like to, um, they would like to allow for automobile, trailer, heavy equipment, recreational vehicle, boat, manufactured home services in the light industrial zone. And those specific services would be for repair and modification shops and sales and rentals. This is currently allowed as a conditional use in the light industrial zone. And they are asking that it be allowed as a permitted use. It is also permitted use already in the general industrial zone. So to evaluate this application, the procedural use is a type for land use. Planning Commission's authority tonight is to craft a recommendation for council. We'll submit a written report and the recommendation to city council. And then city council will be the decision-making body. All right, so this is an overview of the proposed amendments. They're focused in chapter three. And so there, there would be a ch- uh, update to trout deal development code three point zero two zero. That's simply the zoning district outline. That is like a table of contents. I have a picture of it, but we'll just change the numbering in that section. And then the next is the general purpose and intent. And so we'll move all of our general purpose and intent statements for the industrial zones into this one section. There's not changes to the content of these descriptions. They're just moving their location. And these descriptions are, are general. They regard the purpose and intent of the each industrials district. So there's the industrial parks, there's the white industrial zone and the general industrial zone. Then in section three point four two zero, that will introduce a use table, and that will consolidate the uses that were previously listed in each of the individual zones into one table. And then that will be repeated for the dimensional standards table and repeated for the additional standard section. I have a few images of what this would look like. So this is the zoning district outline table that I was mentioning, and you can see how it will be renumbered. This is an overview of the old system versus the new numbering system. So you can see that this all falls under three point four, our industrial zoning district chapter. And then the individual zones will move up right under general purpose. And then that will be followed by, so on the right, if you're looking there, that will be followed by the use table, followed by the dimensional standards table, and followed by the additional requirements list. And then the sections where those used to be housed in three separate sections would just be removed from code. Okay, and this is a look at the proposed use table. You'll find this in section, in pages nine through eleven in the staff report. And this table shows now all of the uses listed down that left-hand column. And then in the middle, you'll see the industrial park, light industrial, and the general industrial in the middle column, and then the far right is the specific standards. So if there's something really specific to know about that use, then it will be referenced there, and you'll go to that section to find out more details about how it can be constructed or other rules that they need to follow. The key is written right before the, the table starts. So P would mean that it's a permitted use in that zone for the column that falls in. C would mean it's a conditional use. N means it's not permitted. I just noticed a typo tonight that there's NF listed on one of those. That should just be an N. So we'll catch that before it goes to council.
Please do still catch it otherwise.
All right, these are the proposed findings. I'm recommending that each of these criteria are met, but the criteria that planning commission and council will consider is that the proposed change in development code does not conflict with applicable competence, land use plan goals or policies. The proposed change is consistent with the applicable statewide planning goals. The proposed change is consistent with the applicable provisions of Metro Code. Public needs best satisfied by this particular change, and the change will not firstly affect health, safety, and welfare of the community. And I have the, I have more context for how these findings are met in the staff report, but I'll, I'll just for the presentation, say that these criteria are met. And if you'd like to confirm any of them. We received testimony in favor of this from Pacific Northwest Properties. And they are in support of changing this conditional use to a permitted use. In their letter, they note that they have several properties that are already conducting these types of uses. So it will be helpful for their tenants to now have permitted uses to keep doing the activities that they're doing. And then if those spaces turn over and a new business comes in that would like to do a similar use, it will be easier for them to turn over at least their properties. Their letter is attachment B of your packet. Staff's recommendation is to recommend approval to city council. And city council's hearings are scheduled for October twenty fifth and November eighth for this matter. That is, that's it, short and sweet. So please let me know if you got any questions.
Questions for staff? Wilcox, there you go.
Uh, yes, um, your very first page. So this is a two-part application. How does that work? I thought it was just the, the city applying.
Um, we, because we received a request to change the permitted uses. And we were planning to do this update anyhow, we have agreed to incorporate this request into our routine update of code. A few months ago, I'm not sure if this. A few months ago, I'm not sure if this came to commission or not. Maybe it was a half a year ago now, with our previous director, this did come in as an application for a zoning map amendment to change these properties to general industrial. And it is it is, it is a smaller and easier change, really, to do it this way and just change that one use that they need instead of changing our map, which would change many uses on their properties. This is, this is a much less invasive way of addressing it.
Question. Are you saying they did a map amendment? They requested a map amendment?
Initially, and then through staff discussion, this was identified as a better route. Than a map.
So you're, I don't mean to get in front of you here, Paul, but your reasoning for doing this is because you had an applicant previously apply, and they're still active wanting the change.
Yes, they would still like that change. That application was withdrawn. But we knew that we were going to come to this update because we had done residential, then commercial, or maybe it was the other way around, and now it's time to come to the industrial. So we're incorporating their request at the same time.
Does that work, Commissioner Wilcox?
Okay. Well, I've got the floor here. I'm going to lay out my position on this. It sounded like reading between the lines that that past application was the request to essentially upgrade their light industrial areas to general industrial area or zoning, whatever you want to call it. That makes more sense to me because you've got an island of light industrial surrounded by general industrial. Now, if they want to, or if your staff wants to upgrade light industrial to what's allowed in general industrial, that's going to apply to all your light industrial areas, not just this particular property. You have other light industrial areas in the city. But this change allowing what they're asking for applying to, you know, vehicles essentially. Repair and modification of all sorts of vehicles, everything from cars to heavy equipment. So let me, let me just read something. Let me, let me juxtapose what they're asking for and then what light industrial allows. What's being requested is an upgrade to automobile, truck, trailer, heavy equipment, recreational vehicle, boat, and manufactured home sales, rentals, and repair shops. And when you start doing, including repair and, and another term, modification, you're, you're, you're introducing petroleum products, solvents, possibly compressed gas welding material, equipment. Now let me read what's the purpose of light industrial. This district is primarily intended for light clean industries, usually of a manufacturing or storage nature with little outdoor storage. These industries usually do not require rail access and have very little process visibility. They usually create little or no air or water pollution and have few, if any, nuisance factors such as bright yard lights, continuous noise, or objectionable odors. Professional offices and limited retail sales are permitted in compliance with the Toronto Development Code. And here's, here's, I think this is my key, key element here. Users within the LI district may be located adjacent to residential uses with appropriate buffering. So I don't, I don't see that letter E under permitted uses being compatible with being adjacent to residential areas. So that's basically my, my, my position laid out for your consideration. Thank you.
And the residential that we're talking about would be on the south area.
South of baby.
All right.
You're asking residential adjacent to
Yeah.
light industrial. There's not any, light industrial exclusively is just the, it's, I suppose there is some along the, the highway there.
Well, there's like a brick or some kind of large stonework. There's also the county animal shelters there. And there's a couple other businesses there, but it's not.
So that area.
Yeah, just, just south of baby border.
There you go. Perfect.
Right, right there.
That would be the area that you're talking about. That'd be right. Commissioner Wilcox.
Yes, that's correct.
So that could potentially butt up against residential, right?
It already does, I think.
Yeah.
Some helping in it, but not.
That would be the only one that I can see. That would.
That new, that whole new whole development is directly south of that light industrial.
Oh, oh, doc.
Yeah. And then there's that hard law.
Yeah, that would be. What's the color?
Yeah, that would be them. And what's, is there new housing going in south of that industrial?
Not this time. Yeah. So she's talking about the facility there. And Halsey.
Yeah, I'm in the wrong area. This goes down further down by the dog. There is some.
How do we address the concern about butting up against residential? Which point was that, Commissioner Wilcox? When you're concerned with G or H?
There are additional, sorry, I've been speaking out of turn. There are additional setbacks for there are additional setbacks for any uses in the industrial areas if it affects residential use. So that is, that is one piece that would, would apply. I would say if we turn those, if we do the zoning map amendment and change those to general industrial invites in all of the general industrial uses. So then you could have paper milling, for example, on those properties or, or other uses.
And additional conventional standards. Additional setback requirements if any use in the district buts or faces new residential zone districts. You set back of fifty feet from the property line or center line of an inner inch intervening public street on the side of running or facing the residential zone. Shelby required. But again, like you said, general industrial bites a hole. Another step.
Fifty feet's a pretty decent setback.
And then you have to, you know, be last. Then you to allow for sound.
It's a skinny lot for a fifty-foot setback. Just saying. You comfortable with that use for the fifty-foot setback, Commissioner Wilcox?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Are you concerned with all of them or just that one in particular?
All of what?
You were talking, one you were talking about was equipment repair, right?
Well, also the the part of light industrial about little outdoor storage. I mean, if you've got a whole bunch of vehicles, you'd have, you'd have an awful large building if they're going to be enclosed.
I think the applicant is suggesting that many of these activities are already happening on these properties, and they haven't been causing an issue.
Right, and they're non-conforming. That's what he wants to permit it to conform.
Which makes it easier for him to lease his property.
So it's not like we're introducing something new.
Right.
Already happened.
And so those are the ones that we're changing, right?
Right.
I should have said Pacific Northwest Properties were technically that. Okay. Missed that, but you know, and that's, thank you.
But they brought you to this point, kind of. Sales rentals, repair and modification. All right, so I think that's the big issue.
But they're already doing it.
Yeah.
Okay, well, my, my main issue was that the change would apply to other light industrial sections of the city. I'm fine with that particular location for those particular uses. But, you know, like I said earlier, I would prefer that they had upgraded all their property to general industrial rather than trying to upgrade their particular light industrial.
And so you, like us, are worried about those properties south.
Right.
Yeah.
There's already
town center overlay.
That does, it doesn't extend that far. Or, no. No, none of the industrial properties are within the town center.
It's close.
And you, you know, have it wintered. So any of the uses that are already there on the south side. Like the animal shelter. This, I don't know, it's a stone. It has large you know, stone. I know it's there, but I don't want it tall because I don't go down there. It also goes underneath the train tracks.
Oh, you're talking about the
It looks like forest.
Yeah. Oh.
You will have it.
Yeah. It is with village. Yeah.
So that's on the other side.
It's further down.
Yeah.
Yeah. And they do manufacture it there.
Right, right. But that's another person.
No, that's not.
Okay. So that would be, that could be the potential issues, having those uses in there.
Right. Would it be any higher than the train school too? I mean, the train goes through there a lot.
It does. I thank you. Feel the pleasure. Okay.
I have two thoughts.
You do?
I have two thoughts. Maybe, maybe Commissioner Wilcox, one of these ideas might help as a potential way of amending this to be a little bit more comfortable. We, on the use table, the far-right column is specific standards. We could write a reference to a new section for that particular use, and we could say it's limited north of I eighty-four in the light industrial area. So maybe we could limit it a little bit further geographically. Or another thought might be of these. It's, it's a long paragraph the use they're requesting, right? So maybe there's maybe one specific part of that you might want to admit from there. That could be possible.
That we would just omit for
like maybe heavy equipment is causing the most concern.
South of I eighty-four.
Yeah, two different ideas. I think maybe, I think maybe the best of those two ideas is to maybe put that geographic limitation on it. Maybe it's only north of I eighty-four that you want to invite those uses into the light industrial area.
David, what do you think?
I guess I'm just curious. Have you kind of been moving towards like an overlay? It's just, it just feels like we are in it. Just kind of. Since I think I liked your idea of admitting there's certain uses that are more noxious. As opposed
In that area.
And that's south of, or the whole light industrial.
I think whole light industrial area. I think, I think you're getting into territory where it feels like you're creating an overlay or you're creating something.
Geographically.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm not, not sure, I'm not sure that's, not sure if that's a good place to go or not.
Okay.
But I think you could take out, I think you can modify the uses and the uses that you don't feel comfortable having them do, having them still go through a conditional use review for this.
Okay. All right. And those would be repair and modification, I'm guessing? Is that the one you're talking about?
Maybe, perhaps Commissioner Wilcox would have an opinion, but the one that jumped out at me was maybe heavy machinery.
Okay.
Heavy equipment. I'll skim their letter again to see.
Commissioner Wilcox?
My, my highest priority would probably be to eliminate or delete repair and modify, number one.
You're thinking more fabrication.
Right.
There. So is that another way to treat it?
Use here. They're conditionally, it is.
Be conditioned.
It's conditional now. Once they want to change it.
That's right.
That is the big thing that I'm looking for is the sales piece. So I think they're trying to sell more vehicles. Because of Amazon.
Skimming their letter to see if they, if they really specify exactly
Okay.
their use. But yes, sales was important.
Driving it. Well.
They said they, they're wishing to avoid heavy or dirty use that would come with general industrial.
It currently over in the corporate park. You've got a guy who
You've got a guy who, that's anti cars. Rebuilds them. We've got a guy that takes, I think it's like a race car. Takes us all on this exit by year. But it's in the shop. I mean, I'm just thinking of the ones that I know that are in the corporate park right now, that are currently working under a condition. Evidently.
Yeah.
And do you not consider modifying them?
Yeah. And so I'm looking at the repair, taking the repair and modification. The various people that are concerned.
It just becomes conditional, I would think.
Yeah, but that's what they're trying to eliminate.
Is the conditional use for modifications.
Modifications, because it's not, it's a clean, basically clean.
Yeah.
It's not big equipment.
I mean, the guy did that. Car is just painting. Actually, you have another, over there, you have another body shop over there. You know.
And what's a consider condition use. They're not conforming, basically.
I like the idea of the south side. Taking Stefan out.
Yes, Commissioner.
So. Yeah, I don't see a problem north of the freeway. It's already happening.
Right.
I don't, it's not bothering anybody. South of the freeway. Yeah, that, that may be concerning.
Those houses are most, and I know some of that live or at least there are a lot of those are duplexes. So, and some of that property is already developed.
Where are we talking?
On the south side.
On the south side. But I don't see anything on the north side.
I don't think we can eliminate the zone.
I think we're talking about a conditional, specific standard.
So are we making it more complicated?
Yeah. Then you have to design.
Okay, I thought this pounder do over there.
What's pounder do?
Pounder's got that hole on the south side with all the heavy equipment parked in there.
Yeah. I think they just store it there.
Right.
Store it. Okay, so. You're, you don't like the geographic piece, right? Think that's a problem.
I think it's.
Don't mean to push you off the spot.
Yeah, I, I think it's kind of setting up a precedent for doing things that that I'm not sure long-term benefits use of the code.
Okay.
But, you know, I also kind of look at my staff here if they think differently. Cause they know the code better than me, so. Don't mean to push you off the spot, but. Well, I think, I think.
Sorry, I, I've abused code like that in a different city. That doesn't mean it was good code. That doesn't apply as well here, but that is why it jumped to my mind.
Okay.
I still want. Because they said down here, it says wholesale trade, trade details, discounts, services. Which is a permitted industrial. But isn't that the same thing?
I, I think I'd be ashamed to discourage.
Yeah.
Business on the north side.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I, I like the permitted some of the changes in the, I like it, the way it looks. I think it works.
But you want to do it geographically.
No, I want to leave it like it is, just like it is. I don't think geographically it's going to make any difference.
You do not want to do the adjustment? You want to take the adjustment as recommended?
As recommended, yeah.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Okay.
I mean, you need to encourage business to keep our downtown viable. And if we start restricting what can be used. And, and make it easier for someone to come in with a small business. I'm all for it. Cause most of these properties aren't going to have huge businesses. It's not like Fed Act is coming in, they're already here.
Yeah. I know it's not huge, but there is a fifty foot setback.
Yeah.
That does help.
That is, I agree. Any, cause the next one, Dan talks about additional setback requirements.
Right.
If it's a budding, something that has a heavier setback.
Right. And then also most residential have another ten feet or so.
Right.
So.
Thank, yeah, I, I guess the truth is, is that the dark, the, the animal shelter. That's, that gets pretty loud.
Oh, yeah.
It's all the time, right? So.
It's going away. Okay.
Well, it is.
Yeah.
But still.
Where'd you go? Someplace else.
My, my thought there was that what's being proposed here isn't, isn't as disruptive as the animal shelters.
It's been a long time.
Been there a long time.
That long? Oh. Alright. So what do you want? We want to move this?
I think you should leave it at that.
So is that your motion or are you ready? So I would recommend approval of case number seventy-five twelve. Pursued, proposed text amendments to City Council for consideration, public hearing scheduled for October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two and November eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approvals case files. Recommendation to City Council for approval in case file seven five dash two, just for zone uses. Post text amendments to Child Development Code. Any questions, discussion on the motion? Commissioner Wadilla?
Yes.
Commissioner Leamy?
Yes.
Commissioner Prickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
No.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
And Chair Stephenson?
Yes.
Okay.
We're talking about staff communications. And that's what I. Communicate.
Watch this, if she does it. Are you doing it?
Oh, I have one update tonight for you. But, and, and we did talk about this last time, but I just want to reiterate because I am looking forward to attending this. I'll be going on Thursday, as will Alex. And, have I invited you yet, David? To come, you should come to this too.
You haven't.
So, okay. So there's, okay. Well, okay, there's planning commissioner training coming up on Thursday, five to seven thirty. And I do recommend this for us all to attend. Land use decision making for planning commissioners, elected officials, city administrators and planners. If you're not able to come, there is a reported version and that one's fifteen dollars. These are reimbursable, so you can turn your receipts into me or Alex and you can get your reimbursement from the city. But there is a reported version that you can attend at another time if you're not. Just one update for you tonight, but we should introduce David, our new community development director, who has been here on your second week now.
Yeah, we're getting past just ten days. You know, first it was the hours, now it's more to the days, now we're talking weeks. They haven't shown me the door yet.
You're still here.
Yeah.
Are you, wait, nobody scared you off yet?
They're trying, but I'm still here. Anyway. Nice to meet you all. My name is David Bernaker. I am the new community development director. I come from a far away from the city of Gresham. Where I was planning director for seven years. And I was seeking a different type of opportunity. Gresham's different in, in than Chautauqua in terms of its size and just in terms of how, well, go back to the size. So the size allows for, at least for someone like myself, and was looking for more, a little bit more hands-on and to sort of make things happen. And was very intrigued and influenced by, and, and applying based upon the confluence site. I think it's a gem, and I said that last night to City Council. I think you have a very special Main Street. I biked it a bunch of times. I love going up the hill and going, can't wait to go further out. So I just think you're, the, the folks who live and work and recreate in Chautauqua are in a really unique place in East County. So I was excited about that. My training is, I'm trained and practiced as an architect and planner and urban designer. I mostly come at it often, a lot of times through a design lens. So I think that's kind of my forte. My goal is to, you know, work with leadership and the citizens to create a kind of complete, connected and holistic, complete and connected community. When I say connected, it's not just physical connections, but it's how we connect socially and economically and things of that nature. You know, look forward to, or think there's a lot of opportunity here to work with all stakeholders to hopefully make something happen that, in my mind at least, in my words, reflects the city's past and city's architectural character, but also, again, using my words, looks forward. You know, looks forward to what does it mean to be a thriving, small city? I think there's a lot of discussion out there, are we a city or not? I hate to tell folks that we are a city. We might be a small city, but we're a city. And I think it's important that we be thinking forward about where and how we collectively want to grow. And me and the team are here to help support that. And so then have plenty of experience working with the development community and the design community, as well as our partners at Chinette and Metro in the county. And happy to be here.
I don't have anything.
Nothing?
Not, not, not at this time.
Well, it is good to see you all in person.
Yes, it's good to see you, sir.
So it's good to be here and welcome aboard, David.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I think it's a good meeting. And it's early, thank God.
Commissioner Wilcox?
No, nothing to add, thank you.
I want to thank the city. You all, you worked hard, you've done a wonderful job. It's, I like the new charts, they're easy, it makes it look like we're making it easier for development. It makes it more compact and not so cumbersome. And welcome. We appreciate coming into our small city. Twenty-fourth is now paved, yay! They did have a tour up there a few weeks because they're doing some infrastructure. Twenty-eight is still like, tore up, but it won't be long. A little hard when you see the buses go by your house, when you're using, don't go by your house, but that's okay. I'm getting used to it. So, but guys are doing a wonderful job, thank you.
Welcome, David. And it's, it's been a rough couple of days between tonight and last night. It's much more brutal than it usually is, actually. The City Council last night had the first read on the recommendation for T S P. And the second read will be October eleventh. And at this point, they were I would say split on the bridge. Our recommendation, if you remember, was moving it from the action plan to the master plan. Some that were in favor of that and others were in favor of leaving it on the action plan. And a couple of other things that took place is they tasked a committee to, made up of public safety individuals and some budget individuals and council individuals to look at the police and fire contracts. Just looking at the service that we're getting, how much we're paying, you know? Is there a different way? Is there something that could be done differently? Need to look at those kind of holistically because they're ten-year contracts and I think they're up. I think it's when they're up. So this is a good time to be looking at those and so they'll be a working group that will be working on that piece of it. Sandy? What was the other thing that happened last night?
That was a long time ago.
The bicycle parking.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, there was some a pretty good discussion about bicycle parking in downtown. And I'll say this, I actually thought they came up with a pretty good solution. Not taking the one parking spot that was on the north side and just using the ones that really aren't parking spots now. If I had that right. Is that right, Sandy? What should council plans?
It's fine. Um, yeah, we were trying to keep the parking spot and also not have the spot right in front of the dental office, especially since they had written in be filled with bicycles when most of the bicycles were at other locations.
That was a good point that somebody had. If you get a tooth pulled, you're probably not getting on a bike and ride home. I, I think it was a good point.
Well, in a lot of, I would count, tell people you said dental.
Dentists?
Dentists, they come to trial though to use the dental, because it's easier. So if they don't have parking, they go to the dental office.
I thought you were thinking like tourists.
No.
Travel dangerous.
I know that live outside of Chautauqua, but come to this dentist.
Oh, wow, okay. Alright, so that's kind of what's happening lately. And again, welcome, David, and you're just like using the fire now. Really appreciate having you here. Okay, and so with that, I want to thank everybody for all their time. And this has been a couple of tough, tough cases lately. And thank you for all the work and your dedication to the city. Really appreciate it. Thank you, staff. Really appreciate you guys. And with that, take a motion.
I moved up your jersey.
One second then.
Motion, second to adjourn all in favor. Post, okay, we are, thank you all.
Pass me your name, the name.